What an turnout. There must be something happening tonight. It's good to see everybody. Welcome to this meeting. We're going to have the invocation. We're going to have the reading of the minutes. Then I'll have some comments to talk about the rules of engagement here tonight. I'm going to treat everybody with respect. Everybody has a right to be here. You will stand for the invocation. Lord, thank you for this great county and the privilege to live here. Thank you for all these good citizens that have come to be with us tonight and share their ideas. Thank you for the leadership of this county. Thank you for the leadership of this nation. Give us, give this board the wisdom to make the best decision on behalf of all citizens of Pickens County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have the reading and approval of the previous minutes.
Could you speak a little louder? I've got hearing aids in and I'm still not hearing.
We're going to have the reading of the minutes and approval.
I'll make a motion that the minister has just written.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay. We've got several items on the agenda. Let me cover a few ground rules just to help everybody understand who we are and how we got here. We're, we're members of the planning commission. We were appointed by the commissioner to serve in this capacity. To hear you, represent you and hear the issues that come before us. We're going to, as the process goes along, we're going to hear from the staff and they're going to give us an overview of each item. They're going to share with us their recommendation and why. We'll then have, hear from the applicant and have them speak and add anything to the recommendation that has been presented. The planning commission members will ask questions of the staff as necessary to clarify what's been brought before us. We're going to then call on citizens who have signed up to speak. Those of you that have come in have signed the form asking to speak. And I will share with you that we're going to have 10 minutes on each side. 10 minutes for, 10 minutes against. That's not each person because I ate back at dinner. We all want to get hungry at dinner. So there's more people here on some of the issues and I suspect you know each other. And so you might think about who is going to represent you and utilize the 10 minutes for your side efficiently. In the past, when there's been five people, for example, each person took two minutes. And I'll ask you, when you get ready to speak, and I'll call on you from the sheets here, and if you have signed your speaking obligations to another person that's already registered to speak, then we'll let that person have your time. But 10 minutes each side. Sometimes people get excited in these meetings and they say things that their mother would not approve of. And I have no tolerance for that. I grew up in Savannah, Georgia, where the matriarch of our family was a Southern Laker. And you know what happens when you speak bad language in front of Southern Lakers. I learned long ago, just don't do that. So we're going to be respectful of each other. Everybody has a right to be here. Just because the person has a different cue than you doesn't make them wrong. It doesn't make you right. We just want to hear from those that can and can't. Any other questions that you have, get directed to us and we will ask questions. You don't direct questions to the applicant or anybody else. Is that, is that pretty clear? Are we good together there? All right. Well, we can have a good meeting then and get out of here at a reasonable hour. So with that, Wes, we've got one old business and we've been here before.
Yes, we have.
And you will, we'll open a hearing on RZ 190318.
Okay, we have RZ 22190318. That is Big Canoe Holdings, Mike Ziegler, 10-777-BIGCANO, Jasper, Georgia. The location is Steve Tate Highway, Marble Hill, rezoning from neighborhood commercial to highway business. The parcel ID is 047005 and proposed use to develop climate-controlled storage units in both RV storage. The current land use is undeveloped. The lot size is 2.0 acres. The road access is Steve Tate Highway. The zoning history is, there was RZ 21190195, which changed the designation to Neighborhood Commercial in October 21st, 2021. Executive summary is the applicant requests to rezone, total of two acres on Steve Tate Highway from Neighborhood Commercial to Highway Business. The applicant is requesting the zoning change to develop climate-controlled storage and both RV storage on the property. As we look again, the seven areas of concern, eight that we have, the recommendation of the staff is for approval of highway business zoning with condition that there's a minimum of 40-foot landscaped buffer between this parcel and the adjoining parcel 047006, which is located directly south in the zone RR. Are there any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Excuse me. You know, the board.
Is this a topic that it joins in?
I'm sorry. I did not recognize you yet. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you wasn't even there.
No, I was talking, I was speaking with the board.
I take your part.
All right. Mr. Ziegler, would you add anything to what? You've been here before.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been here before. The planning commission made a recommendation to approve. You know, there's some, there's some news floating around out there, some fake, some not fake, but most of it is talking about the area doesn't support highway business. But when you look at that, I believe Nicole was going to create a map of it, but highway business is everywhere in that area. All of Big Canoe's, Big Canoe property and our association's common property is highway business. The entire length of Steve Tate Highway from Home Restaurant down to Trinity Church, highway business, the whole area is highway business and falls within the future land use map of Pickens County as highway business. It's, it falls right in. But that's all I have.
And you on board with the recommendations of the staff concerning the buffer zoning?
Yes. Same as last meeting? Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have, I've got six forms here and I think that comes down to a minute and a half per person. Nicole is the timekeeper and so I'll call on each one of you individually. If you want to pass your time to somebody else, you can tell me that as long as they're on the list of those that have signed up. Yes?
Please just add on, just to refresh the memory. So the original applicant was a gentleman looking to do a climatized boat and RV storage. That contract went away at that point in time and that's when I stepped in as the presenter, if you will. And so the term that boat and RV storage is coming to that piece of property may not be accurate. I just want, and I clarified that last time, it's, that may not be what's happened with the property.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant, the boards?
What are the plans for it now that the other fell through?
Well, truthfully, we're trying to, just like any real estate investor or developer would do, to give the property its highest and best use of value. So highway business would certainly do that. There is a good chance that the climatized storage would come there. But until a contract is closed and until all of that due diligence plays out with funding and the like, I just don't want to commit to that project and then a restaurant show up there and they say, well, Mr. Ziegler didn't tell us the truth. So I'm trying to be forthcoming with that.
First person I have is Michelle Melvin. Am I getting that right?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask if anyone else wants to donate their time to me? Is that appropriate?
I do. Thank you. Are they signed up?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And your names are, who, the people that are saying they're donating?
I'm Michelle Melvin.
Sorry, yeah, they are.
Who was the others?
How are you, Elian?
I just have, I still have Randy. I'm sorry, what's this?
Just a hand up from Michelle.
Oh, is this? All right. So I only had, I got Terry and I've got Phillip.
Sir.
And I still have Randy. Is that right?
Yes.
And you're going to speak.
Very pleased.
And is it Jenny Beard?
That's me and I'm going to, she's going to speak on my behalf.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay. So I still have three. So Michelle will give you about six minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I get a one-minute warning? Is that possible?
Natala will give you a one-minute warning.
Okay, thank you so much. So good evening, Mr.
Give us your address.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Michelle Melvin for the record and I live at 176 Willow Drive, Big Canoe, Pickens County.
Do you want to come forward or do you want to stay back there? There are a lot of babbiness in here, I know.
Yeah, don't count me out.
Thank you.
And I had teenagers once. I thought I could really protect my voice, but it really wasn't.
I had those too.
Shall I begin now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So, good evening. I said for the record, I am Michelle Melvin. I've been informed that when this matter advances to the county commission, that the board can only consider what's in the record. So I want to enter some documents in the record. Mr. Melvin has passed them out to you. The first is a petition that was signed electronically by more than 350 residents of Big Canoe opposing this request. The second is my CV or resume and I will summarize it by telling you that I am a professional urban planner. I have a master's degree in urban and regional planning from the George Washington University. I am certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners and I have nearly 35 years of experience. I have also qualified in federal court and circuit courts as an expert in planning, zoning, and land use matters. The third document is an analysis that I prepared of the subject rezoning request and I give an expert opinion there and I gave you my resume to document that I'm qualified to opine on this matter. So section 67-15 of the Pickens County Code lists seven criteria that you must, it says must, consider when evaluating this zoning request. And these are as follows. The first is whether the proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed zoning district will allow heavy commercial, because the next zoning district after that is industrial. So it's heavy commercials that are not compatible with the zoning that surrounds the site. The zoning that surrounds the site, immediately surrounds it, is neighborhood commercial, not highway commercial, and that implements the planned community's comprehensive plan designation. So it doesn't meet this criterion. The second is whether the property value is diminished by the current zoning. The current zoning allows more than 36 uses, that's a broad array of uses, and there's no clear convincing evidence that has been provided to you that the value of the site is diminished by the current zoning. So it doesn't meet this criterion. The third is whether or not it's suitable. The site is just under two acres. It's suitable in size and configuration for neighborhood commercial. With a heavy commercial use, as staff has indicated, it's going to require at least a 40-foot buffer. That's going to diminish the size and usability of it. So it's my opinion, it doesn't meet this criterion as well as the existing zoning. The fourth criterion is vacancy and marketing. That's what the code states, how long the site has been vacant and the effort made by the owners to use or sell the property. The parcel was rezoned to the current intensity on October 21st of 2021, less than a year ago. The current owner acquired the property on March 10th, 2022, and filed the rezoning request less than two weeks later. This can hardly be considered adequate time to determine if the existing zoning is appropriate. So it doesn't meet this criterion. The next criterion is evidence of need and the code states that the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate that the request promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. While there is HB zoning in the broader area, that's true, the subject parcel is surrounded by neighborhood business, and to the contrary, many of the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district are not permitted in the existing zoning district and they can be considered detrimental to the public welfare, given its location on Steve Tate Highway, a two-lane rural roadway. Not only are the HC uses auto-oriented, which typically has a higher traffic generation, but some of the uses such as parking lots and storage, as may be contemplated, have potential for negative impacts on the environment, particularly for soil and groundwater contamination from oil and fuel. It doesn't meet this criterion. The next criterion is whether there are public facility impacts, whether possible result in uses that could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation, and utilities. Not only might the auto-oriented uses envisioned by the proposed zoning district allowed in this district generate additional vehicular trips, there has been no analysis presented regarding this concern on impact on water and sewer, another hot topic that will be before you later, not related to this, but it's important to know that. And without this information, it doesn't meet this criterion. The next one is consistency with the comprehensive plan and I could have skipped all of this and just gone right to this criterion. It is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site has a future development designation of planned communities, which include uses only allowed in the current neighborhood, does neighborhood commercial designation and not the requested designation. The comprehensive plan says that the NC designation, which it has, is the same as Betree and Big Canoe, and it says in the plan that those communities may influence development nearby, such as quote, cluster of commercial establishments nearby the north entrance to Big Canoe, end quote.
One minute.
Pardon me?
One minute.
Okay. So the plan states development patterns should preserve rural character. It says scenic views should be preserved and environmentally sensitive issues and resources should be preserved. Highway business does not do that. The plan states the primary land uses, including neighborhood commercial, not highway business, and implement strategies, the county should encourage quality design feature and, and site design for commercial on Steve Tate Highway. One other condition is, criterion is whether there are other conditions. Steve Tate is a rural two-lane roadway. The parcel is diagonally across from Home Restaurant, an upscale, well-rated eatery. It's just south of the North Gate Station, which markets itself as the quote, "most beautiful retail center in Georgia." And although the rezoning of the site would not limit its use to outdoor storage, there are many things that it could be, the use alone is not compatible with the general area. In conclusion, because my time is about up, I would say that this rezoning request doesn't meet this final criterion.
Time.
And encourage you to deny. Thank you.
Rodings.
Thank you. That goes with the key options.
Yes, number one.
Okay, I can.
Okay. Let's see. Randy?
I'm here.
Randy, come forward. State your full name and your address, please.
I'm Randy McKee and I'm on North Gate Station Shopping Center, that's 30 North Gate Station Drive, Marble Hill, Georgia, 30140. Also live at Big Canoe. My concern is that, as I was just going to say, the neighborhood zoning that it has right now here at Commercial specifically stated in your overall plan for Steve Tate State Highway. And that's for businesses that are supported services inside the neighborhood, in the neighborhoods of the nasty town. Highway business is appropriate, and it states clearly, for Highway 53 and Highway 515. This is for business of life that are being proposed here, along with the Dollar General and things of that sort. This is inappropriate in this area and it will reduce property value in this area. It's going to reduce your activity. I think it's inappropriate.
Thank you. Wes, a couple of, a couple of questions were raised here. A couple of questions were raised in our first presentation. Ms. Melvin, would you bear comment? I know you've done a thorough and exhaustive review of this twice.
Twice, yes. So. Again, as I stated before, number one, I look at the comprehensive map. And the comprehensive map, as you can see there, that purple is highway business and it is up and down Steve Tate, all the way to Marble Hill. I had some slides that were all down. In fact, you see that strip, it's just right there? Y'all have it in your packet. That goes all the way down to Marble Hill and there's several interspersed. If you'll look across the way into Big Canoe, you will also see all purple. Okay? So the inconsistency is that what's truly there is not consistent with the comprehensive plan either, but yet it satisfies the needs of people in Big Canoe. Now, as far as the seven criteria, I addressed them, but again, I address them in relation to the comprehensive map. That is all the wall in my hall by my office. Anybody can come see it anytime. I've used it before to show, I've encouraged people to come look at it. It doesn't matter to them. They only want to see what they want to see. So all I'm trying to do is present the facts. I'm not biased in any which way whatsoever. It matters not to me. It just matters to me what I see and what I'm looking at. And at this point in time, I tried to complete all eight criterion and I did announce a decision for each one and the board has them.
Thank you, Wes. Questions from the board?
Are we changing this to highway business? One of the papers I got says highway commercial.
Yeah, it's highway business. We have no designation highway commercial. That's probably a mistake. I also want to point out that this is all available to the public. It's called Qpublic.net. You can look at it as well as I can. Look over to the left-hand side, number five position is zoning. Click on it and look and you can follow all this yourself too.
Further questions? Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion that including the buffer that should be added. It says the agrees to that was recommended. With that, then it'd be approved.
All right. We have a motion to approve the applicant. Application as submitted.
We can't hear by appearing in the light. If you don't, please speak up.
We have a motion to approve the application. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is a further discussion by the board? All in favor of the motion? Please raise your right hand.
What is the motion? We haven't heard the motion.
The motion is to approve.
To approve?
Yes.
To approve the change of the zoning? They can't hear back there is the problem.
I'm sorry, I don't have a microphone.
Okay. Stand up. That's it.
You want me to read the motion? Okay. Don't mind what's there. The motion was to approve with the buffer of 40 feet on the property to the south. Is that concise enough? Okay.
What about the property to the north?
That NC designation doesn't require the same buffer as would be for rural residential.
All right. We have a motion to approve. All in favor, again, raise your right hand. All opposed. We have a motion. We are, if the board is tied, the chair will vote with the motion to approve. All right, thank you very much. For those that came just for that particular one, if you would like to leave, we'll give you a few minutes to do it. Otherwise, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We're going to open up. Excuse me. Be quiet, please.
I know.
Shh. Y'all can be quiet, please.
We move on to new business now. We are RZ 190357. Wes?
Yes. Give me a second to put this out of the way from the cell. Okay, we have RZ 22190357. It's Edge Pool Properties LLC, BL 67 Jasper, Georgia 30143. The agent is Dan Poole. The location of the property is south, southwest of Shire's Ford Road in Shire's Ford Creek, pardon, Talking Rock Creek and north of Carver Mill Road and Towson Road. There is no county of private road access to this particular property pending approval of the rezon. Direct access will be through a road that is to be named Edge Knoll if approved by 911. So at this time, I believe I'm told that there's a series of four gates that Mr. Poole has to go through and have various permissions to get to this property. The rezon is 29.66 acres from agricultural designation to suburban residential. The parcel ID is 014033. They propose use of the split of the southern portion, 29.66 acres of parcel 014033, to join to the existing 700-acre suburban residential development. Note, the current property survey for 014033 shows the acreage has 49.41 acres. The current tax parcel shows it as 60, just to clear up any misunderstandings. So evidently, for years, they thought it was 60, ended up being 50 acres. Okay? That's why there's a discrepancy. The remaining 19.75 acres per the current survey will stay agriculture. The undeveloped agricultural use is the current land use and the future land use, of course, is the 29.66 to be added to the preserve at Shire's Ford. And that would enable him to have good permanent access to the remaining 19.75 acres. Let me move through here. Again, my eight criterion is in your report and the recommendation of staff is for approval of suburban residential zoning designation and if the upgrades to the water system by the partnership the partnership are completed. Now, there is some issues that are going on with that, and the development won't move forward unless the water is available, the county water. So we recommend approval to the suburban residential designation of the 29.66 acres with the remaining 19.75 acres remaining agriculture. In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and videos reported in the planning and commissions hearing, including not limited to all the witness testimony in order that this information be made a part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review. Do I have any questions from the board?
So elaborate on this water issue.
The designation that they're requiring, let me make sure I do this right. We have fire marshals still here. The, one of the biggest concerns we have in the county is fire protection, and to have adequate water pressure we're requiring, then they make some upgrades to have additional water if the development goes through. Okay? And so that's some things that are pending.
So the applicant will be in discussion with the water department on...
Not the applicant, the applicant that's receiving the 29 acres. Mr. Poole's the applicant.
Yeah. I said the applicant will be in discussion with the water department on ensuring adequate water supply, right?
Let me say that again. Mr. Poole's the applicant, but the developer of Shire's Ford, the preserve of Shire's Ford, will be the one who is in negotiation with the water department.
So the county will have to preserve the cost of providing a high-capacity tank? Is that what I understand?
Not necessarily. There may be some other means of shared responsibility. I'm not privy to a lot of those, but I would venture that it would be a shared responsibility.
So the developer would not be paying all the costs the county would be paying part of possibly?
Developer pays all the costs for the lines as far as I can tell. They're doing everything in that respect. Now, I'm going beyond my scope here. I'm telling you, so they're making their layout all themselves. The increased capacity will be something that is discussed at another time, and of course, your concerns and mine would be for that very thing, to have as little financial commitment as we could. Can I say that any better without being...
Mr. Poole, what would you add to that?
I'll just add a little something. We have got the, not the 60 acres, but we've got the 50 acres that sits behind Shire's Ford Preserve. We're not in any way connected to the developer or the larger project. They came to us, wanted to buy ours. We're like, nope, not for sale. They're like, well, we need to do a deal because we're going to have you completely cut off before you are backed up with nothing but the creek behind you and us in front of you. We said, well, we will sell you a portion of it in exchange for permanent road access coming through whatever type of development you do in the future. So I have no insight whatsoever into their water or what they need. I'm just know that we are, we were looking primarily to preserve access to get to that, to the property at the back, which is probably the finest piece of property in North Georgia. We've used it since decades for basic hunting, fishing, camping, socializing, and we'd like to intend to keep doing that on the 20 acres we will have left out on the string corridor at the bottom of the ridges.
So how did you pay taxes for 60 acres all the years?
I don't think we're getting a refund. We have the back taxes.
So you're forgiving any future obligation?
I don't believe we have an option, but yes, we will.
Did you get that counsel?
There was a 10.59 difference. I was wondering about that, too.
I thought you could count better than that.
Probably gets, somebody speaks property, we probably could use an updated sort of thing.
Any questions from the board?
Is the land that he is, that you're actually playing with him, is it actually water on the creek?
No, we're keep, well, if you can, there's a map, there's one section that is not really contiguous to ours. It's where the creek cuts across. He would have some creek frontage there, but that is extremely steep. I don't believe there will be a building site at the bottom, but we're keeping all the usable creek frontage.
Pass per acre, they could put on that, but not with you.
I don't believe we are selling. You never know where people can move a house. I do not believe we are selling you anything that they could put a house on you. See, the triangular section, well, actually, that doesn't even touch the creek. We're keeping all of the creek frontage that is built.
Further questions? Do I have a motion?
Come on.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion by the board? I'm sorry, wasn't anybody else wanting to speak on this, was there? I didn't say I have anything. Okay, I'll call, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor? Please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carried. We got you on that tonight. All right, we're going to close that hearing. Move on to CU 190358. Wes?
Page here. Okay, we have conditionally used 22 190358. The applicant is James Hughes Gibbs, Jr., 1987 Gibbs Drive, Ball Ground, Georgia 30107. The agent is Rodney Buckingham. The location is 328 Flower Lane, Ball Ground, Georgia 30107. The request is the property is currently zoned ag, A-G, and the request is for a special use permit to be used as a business retreat slash event center facility. The parcel ID is 068140. That's 068140. The current land use is agricultural. The character area is Marble Hill, and the lot size is 40.56 plus or minus acres. Road access is Flower Lane, Ball Ground. Again, as you can see in your folder, the eight criterion, and that in the special use, we have nine. And staff recommends approval of special use permit request with the condition that the hours of operation do not extend past 10:00 PM, and that in addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and the video recording of the planning and commissions hearing, including not limited to all the witness testimony, in order that this information be made a part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review. Now, let me make sure I read this out. Conditionally used approvals do not include permissions or the permit approvals from all required entities associated with the construction and operation of the requested use. The applicant is responsible for obtaining additional approvals from associated county, state, and federal entities if applicable, and all building permits associated with that. Any questions from the board? As you can see on the flip chart up there, you can see the property as it is with the lake. If you go to the next one, you can see that this is a drawing of the present house, the position on the lake, and then a hand-drawn road that comes down, it goes back into Cherokee County. It goes south through the 40.56 numerical designation. The other dotted line goes out to the Flowers Lane. Any other questions there?
Is the entrance going to be the Cherokee County side, or...?
Yes, sir. That's what we were told.
Can't get a view of wagon down that Flower Lane, right?
Not a very big one. Not a very big one, you correct. They're going to use the entrance, and that'll be a question for Mr. Buckingham and Mr. Gibbs, is that they're going to use the entrance that is in place in Cherokee County.
Further questions? Okay, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to speak, or Mrs. Gibbs going to speak?
I'll speak. I believe there's going to be only three speaking individuals speaking on behalf of Mr. Gibbs, myself, Patsy Carver, and Mr. Boswell.
Patsy Jordan.
Patsy Jordan. I'm going to tell you, my wire talk, but yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, so who's going to speak, or you, Patsy, and who?
Mr. Boswell.
Yeah, okay, right. All right.
There should be one more as well for the measure.
Your name?
What's your name, sir?
Andy.
Andy.
P D four?
Mr. Gibbs.
Okay, all right. Okay, Rodney?
Good evening. My name is Rodney Buckingham, and I have the distinct honor and privilege of standing before you to discuss the conditional use proposal for a piece of property that is part of the well-known Gibbs Gardens. I would like to elaborate on the proposal before you this evening. Mr. Gibbs purchases property we are discussing tonight, which is in Pickens County in February of this year, adding to his current gardens in Cherokee County, which are on, which is on the southern edge of this property. As you are already aware, the current zoning would remain as is, which is agriculture. Our purpose here tonight is simply to address the conditional use for the house, which is on the property, which is in Pickens County. Mr. Gibbs would like to create a retreat and conference center for small gatherings of day retreats, garden club groups, church retreats, business meetings, and educational and horticultural gatherings. I would like to show you some pictures of the current property so that you can fully understand and visualize what we are discussing this evening. And in the event of time, we simply limited it to two pictures. This is one off the back of the house. This is overlooking, and this is Cherokee County on the tree line. Currently, the property is predominantly a wooded area with a home and a pond. Of course, in keeping with the beauty of the existing Gibbs Gardens, the home would have to become the new retreat and conference center would be surrounded by new landscaping and gardens, keeping the wooded area as a natural buffer. At this, as this idea was being developed and proposed, several areas of concerns have been voiced by those nearby property owners. Mr. Gibbs is aware of those and has tried to address those issues with those concerned to varying levels of success. Noise and traffic seem to be the two greatest areas of concern, so I would like to address those at this time. First, noise. Gibbs Gardens work model is based on beauty, peacefulness, tranquility, and quietness. Mr. Gibbs has not proposed anything to go against either his work models or the disturbance of his neighbors. There are no plans to disturb the natural buffer that is provided by his existing gardens. If anything, it will provide a new total of 376 acres of botanical gardens for the four property owners whose property adjoins Gibbs Gardens in Pickens County. Traffic. Mr. Gibbs Gardens is currently located in Cherokee County. They are visited by many individuals, families, and groups from all over the world. What Mr. Gibbs is proposing is to provide a place for these groups to meet in the serenity of the gardens. Access to the proposed project will be through Gibbs Gardens in Cherokee County. The entry points for the gardens are in Cherokee County. The proposed retreat and conference center is in Pickens County, and as such, would need to be served by Pickens County Emergency Services. The purpose of Flower Lane, which is in Pickens County, is for emergency access if needed. In conclusion, this project would supply a much-needed retreat for the public with an extra benefit of it being in a secluded setting without the restrictions of similar event venues that exist, which are member-only venues and/or require you to use their caterers. These are some of the reasons the plan has obtained recommendations and encouragement from the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce and the Pickens County Economic Development. Finally, I would like to thank the Planning and Development Office for their assistance and planned professional manner in going through this process, and express my gratitude for your attention and time this evening.
Thank you. I didn't know you brought a cheerleading squad. Maybe Mr. Gibbs did. Okay, we're going to have, so I've got three that are going to speak, four, and then we'll talk about those that are against, and I have one undecided I'll call on. So Patsy Jordan, just state your name and address, Patsy. Come forward. We don't bite up here.
I'm not scared. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Mr. Jim Gibbs, developer and visionary of Gibbs World Class Gardens. I'm Patsy Jordan, and I live at 4422 Yellow Creek Road in Cherokee County, Georgia. I've been an advocate for many years for keeping the rural area on Yellow Creek Road in Cherokee County as agriculture. Because of Jim Gibbs' assistance and his vision for controlled growth, our first encounter with a zoning change from ag to commercial was successful, and the Cherokee side of Yellow Creek has remained agricultural due to the scenic agricultural land use plan that was developed when Gibbs Gardens opened. The first encounter with commercial zoning was around 2005, when Margaret Martin received a letter that a developer had applied to change, applied to change the zoning from ag to commercial. The plan was to build storage buildings adjacent from our house. We learned that once zoning was changed, then it opened for anything from go-kart tracks to high-density development. I purchased signs myself that said, "No commercial zoning," and was putting one up at my driveway when Jim Gibbs stopped and asked what was going on. When I explained, he immediately asked to see the plan and offered his help. We spent a great deal of time educating the community on the consequences of zone changing. Because of our inexperience with zoning issues, Jim hired an attorney to advise us throughout the process. Karen Reynolds, who is here in this room tonight, secured Shala Methodist Church in the community for us to meet, so we were all given the signed information and could have discussions. We were successful in keeping the area zoned agriculture. A few years later, developers came back with another proposal to build 400 homes on Conscreek Road, and again later to build a high-density development at the end of Yellow Creek Road near the Edouard River. Each time members of the community met privately and discussed strategies before attending commission meetings, Jim was there and fought every single battle with us. I'm happy that the serene, peaceful place called Gibbs Gardens is a part of my community rather than a high-density subdivision. One minute. Imagine the numbers of homes that could have been built on the 376 acres that encompass Gibbs Gardens, and rest assured, developers are hungry to buy properties. Does Gibbs Gardens add traffic? Yes. Do additional homes or high-density subdivisions create more traffic? Yes. The difference is that visitors to Gibbs Gardens are scattered traffic from 9 to 5, plus Gibbs Gardens... five, plus Gibbs Gardens is closed two days a week, Monday and Tuesday, and in the winter months closed from December until March. From what I've read and understand about the proposed plan, all Mr. Gibbs is asking is to renovate a house, keep the zoning as ag, and have it for the community to enjoy and all the people who visit there to have a sheltered place because there is no sheltered place at Gibbs Gardens now. And I ask you to support his proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time.
Ted? Ted Boswell?
Yes.
You've got three minutes.
My name is Ted Boswell. I'm a ten-year resident of Pickens County and I worked at Gibbs Gardens for eight years. My address happens to be 36 Shelton Trace in Wiltshire. My current responsibility at the Gardens include the development center and assure our guests to have the best possible experience while visiting the Gardens. My area of responsibility accounts for the largest portion of the over 100 employees at the Gardens, the majority of which are Pickens County residents. Really, all of us are retired, and Gibbs Gardens has become our part-time career. We understand the positive economic impact Gibbs Gardens has on the surrounding area. Now, I admit, I may be a little biased when it comes to the good things Gibbs brings to North Georgia, but right now, I would like to talk about Pickens County in particular. Previously, there's been, hasn't been much discussion about which county the Gardens are located in. When we need to make a quick repair, we head for Ace and Marble Hill. Trips to Flit Hill's I G A for cleaning supplies or gray deli sandwich. We use a dry cleaner, towing service, locksmith, tire store, repair shops, and on and on, all in Pickens County. All we have to do is exit the Gardens on Yellow Creek Road, hurry, and we're there. In addition, when guests are looking for a good meal or to extend their day with the shopping, they're directed to Flit Hill Shopping Center or to downtown Jasper, because it's a certain of interesting shops and terrific restaurants. Visitors from the north as far away as Chattanooga stop into the area's fast food restaurants, service stations, and grocery stores. There is no doubt in my mind that visitors to the Gardens make a major contribution to Pickens County. Throughout the years, I have the privilege of speaking to thousands of guests, more than you might imagine, more times than you might imagine, I am asked if we have facilities other than our big green tent.
One minute.
Where a company or organization can entertain clients, hold a small meeting or a charity or educational seminar for adults and kids. This meeting is special for our air-conditioning seating as well as restaurants and air conditioning services. At this point, the answer to that question is no. However, once renovated, the 40-acre property and house we are discussing tonight will serve the needs of these groups, including those from Pickens County. Finally, as a county resident, I'm of course concerned about the county's future development. I think we're all aware of the tremendous investment Jim Gibbs has made into developing his 336-acre park gardens in Cherokee County. The addition of the 40 acres in question and the repurposing of the existing house marks a major investment in Pickens County. And I hope this without sacrificing anything, we residents currently enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Gibbs H. Church.
Address?
Um, what was it? Andy Loscavia. I live at 6701 Yellow Creek, directly across the road from Mr. Gibbs. It is because, and solely because of Gibbs Gardens, that I live in the area now and that I call some of you my friends. And without him, there would not be fresh blood brought into this, this community. And I believe that as some of the older residents sell their property or will their all, their all property away, then the properties around us will end up in the wrong hands. Without younger people moving in to protect the neighborhood and support the people who will protect the area, this, this area will fall into the wrong hands. So, it's because of Mr. Gibbs and his visions that protects the area and, like Patsy said, without his vision and his, his support, this area would already look like every other Woodstock and all, all, all the areas that, that we are trying to keep from happening. The man has been a blessing to this area, and hopefully, he, he does the exact same for Pickens County that he has done for our area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we've got a number of folks that want to speak against, and I have one undecided. Let me ask, Evelyn, have you decided which way you want to think about this?
Evelyn, who?
McCrery.
McCrery.
Which?
My concern...
I, I want to know if you are for or against, or do you know yet?
I don't know. I really don't know whether I'm for or against. I'm concerned about intersection.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you some time. We'll let those that are, are against speak, and then we'll let you speak, okay? All right. So, I've got a, a number of, I think there's nine here. One, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine. So, there's nine folks that want to speak against. If all of you speak, you've got one minute. Do you want to consolidate your voices into a call?
I'll defer my time to Mr. Thomas or to Keith Ray.
And your name, sir?
Randy Ray.
There's a Lisa right here, is that?
That's me. I'll defer my time to Keith.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. All right, so Lisa, you are deferring.
Yes, sir.
And let's see, glad you're on here, Randy, did you fill out form two? Bear with me. There you are. All right, so...
I'll defer my time to...
Yes, sir. Your name?
David Hill.
Right, David. I got Catherine.
I'm going to defer my time to Keith, Richard, or Kathy Klein.
You are?
David Hill.
There you are, dude, I'm sorry. All those vapor runs together. All right, so we're down. We've got Kathy, Karen, Richard, Tracy, and Keith, is that right?
I'm, uh, my name's Kathy Klein, and I'm going to defer my time. I brought my parents here, they're my parents, and I just came just because of Mr., is it Preble? I live, yeah, and the, the only comment I would make, not, I don't live here currently, but I grew up here.
Did you sign up to speak?
Yeah, and, and, but I'm going to defer it to Keith Ray. But the only thing I would say in listening to, to everything is that, and Mr. Preble can attest to this, since he grew up in Savannah. I moved to Hilton Head like thirty-something years ago, and you know, well, I don't know if you've been back to Bluffton, but there's a beautiful area of the Low Country that was located off the island, and it, it, it was a little, or it was a one mile, one square mile little space.
I defer your time.
No, no, this is not about yes or no. This is about what everybody should think about, what everybody wants. This is not a yes or no. But I just watched that one square mile go to, grow and grow to 52 square miles, and he can tell you how beautiful the trees were and everything. And what happened was Pandora's Box, and when it opens, and it sounds like Pickens County's not even up with Cherokee County because they stopped, they, your little, your little storage things, and they have them now all over Bluffton. They're red, they look like crap, and when you open it up, it's Pandora's Box. It's your life. It's your life, and it may seem simple, but I don't like it, and I'm for nature preserve, so just so you guys just think about it, because it's your whole everything.
Okay, that knocked off about a minute off their time.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, so in order, which I've got here, I've got Kathy, Kathy Klein.
I defer.
Oh, that's you. Karen Reynolds. Yes, Karen, come forward and tell us where you live.
Hi, Karen Reynolds. How, how many people, so I know how much time to keep a lot to everybody so they get, they're probably not...
Our bound is four. And we just...
He just holds a minute.
I'll just, I'll be brief.
Two minutes.
I don't know if I can use two minutes. But anyway, my name's Karen Reynolds. I live off of Yellow Creek on the Shallow Church, as Patsy said. Mr. Gibbs did help us in the beginning to get a lot of that stopped, but does it still give him the right to keep growing and profiting for himself and our community? He has a beautiful spot. Leave it as it is. I myself go, I go to Shallow, or Shallow Church, and one of our ladies now has been out of church for over a year because she was in a real bad car wreck there at Stansels and Conse Creek. Our traffic is horrible. A lot of people that's coming into this community are not familiar with the roads. Half the time, they don't stop at these stop signs, and my concern is all the traffic. You know, I appreciate what he did and, you know, and he has a beautiful place. Leave it as it is and just leave us agricultural. Don't bring all these other people into our community because a lot of us live there. We're a pretty tight-knit community. And I just hope that you vote no.
Richard Thompson.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you mind if I go ahead of Richard because I want to give part of my time to him? Tracy, Tracy, I'm speaking on McCapa.
So, how many, how do you want to give to him?
Just a couple, just, I just want to read a letter from a, a jointy property. So, it won't take me just a second.
He can't be here, he's in Hawaii.
He's in Hawaii, his mom is not physically able. All he's, all he's, yes, you, I mean...
I think he has an email in your file. I'm not sure.
Anyway, all he's wanting to say is his mom is not well. She can't handle the extra traffic, the extra people, the extra noise, and it will, it will bring noise. There's no doubt about it, it's going to bring noise. Flower Lane, as was said, you can't get a wagon through it, so I'm not sure how you're going to get a fire truck or an ambulance through it. The rest of my time, you go to.
Thank you. All right, Richard Thompson.
Can I say something really quick?
Are you on the list?
I'm not on the list, but I'm on adjacent property, and I was in an accident on the way here.
I'm sorry, you were.
I, I, text messaged Wes and let him know. Called a couple people here. Can I have 30 seconds with him, just so he can be my voice, as I'm not on your list?
Public comment.
I think I, I own the largest single piece of property that adjoins the man's property.
All right, y'all step, y'all step outside and hear from Keith Ray.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Ray. I live at 1030 Camp Road here in Jasper, Georgia. My attachment to this property is I speak on behalf of the Rays and the Kleins, they were my parents and grandparents. I grew up in this community. While I do appreciate the effort that Mr. Gibbs has put into his property, the property that adjoins our properties with this event center has the likelihood of creating noise, right? And we haven't been told what noise limits may be placed on this, will there be music allowed, those kinds of things. And currently, the noise venue, or the music venue that he has down in the valley below our properties within the heart of his gardens is actually very audible on our properties on the hillside above. My parents have tried to communicate with both Cherokee and Pickens County authorities and how to deal with some of that noise at different times, and yes, we know it's limited to certain periods throughout the year, but the county actually has the site plans or the, the development plans for those regions in the Marble Hill area, it is to keep it agricultural. And so, one of our major concerns is that sound impact. We already don't have a means because of that county line there to mitigate what sound impact we have felt from this venue being there. Additionally, I want to ask questions about, is this conditional use strictly limited to the house and the road that is planned? Prior to this, we had not seen this plan, so we didn't know if it was going to be within 100 feet of the property line or not. We see now that it's not, but is it limited to that? And how does that agricultural development, land use actually apply to developing the rest of the property? Because if we're going to have hikers and walkers within 50 feet of our property line, that actually puts it pretty close to the houses that are already there, and so we have concerns about that. I have questions, does, will the footprint of the home stay the same, or are there variables that allow him to expand that footprint? If so, what is the process for expanding that footprint? And how does this special use, conditional use affect that going forward? And when we talk about the noise, I want to hit back on that for just a moment. A lot of communities have noise ordinances. We don't have very technical or noise ordinances in our county, but one thing I do have that's different from the Yellow Creek community compared to other places as you get closer into Jasper, is that the ambient noise level in Yellow Creek is very, very low, and so any amount of noise disturbance is very audible for a long way. And so, I would like to have those questions answered or input from this commission if I could.
All right, Mr. Thompson, you're finally on.
Thank you, sir. This is a request to expand the Cherokee County business into Pickens County, plain and simple. This hasn't changed by the fact that the zoning was stag agricultural, and it's not changed because some choose to add the phrase "world-class" to the business name. My concern is the response, is the expansion of the business once the footprint has been established here in Pickens County. I'm also concerned about emergency service response to the Pickens County side of this business. I've been in law enforcement for 24 years, and I know from firsthand experience that when a venue is split by the county line, confusion about jurisdiction is inevitable. On a procedural note, and to create a record for potential appeals, I'd respectfully submit that the applicant has put the board in a tough spot here. He's done so by submitting an application with information that is too vague. This information is needed for citizens to, one, form an opinion, and, two, prepare for this hearing. In the case of Hawk Center versus Pickens County, the Georgia Supreme Court used specific language when it spoke to the importance of these hearings. It stated, quote, "The whole point is to afford interested citizens a meaningful opportunity to be heard on a proposed zoning decision." The information in this application is too vague for such a meaningful discussion. For example, the application lists three potential uses. Page one lists an event center. Page three lists conference center, retreat center. In the letter of intent, the applicant states it's to, quote, "accommodate potential business retreats." Now, while these things may seem similar, there's no way to know what types of activities they encompass because the applicant explains none of them. A meaningful discussion would have us debating and discussing facts contained in the application. Using this hearing to obtain information that should have been provided in the application changes this from a meaningful discussion of facts to a mission to obtain the facts. This seems to fall short in terms of meaningfulness as emphasized by the Supreme Court. And if I can be specific, we're not trying to be unreasonable here, but when we don't know what things event center encompasses, they can encompass everything from weddings to birthday parties at which caterers could bring in alcohol. We don't know that information, so we can't have a meaningful discussion about the information. That's my only point. If we're going to have a... If we're going to have a meaningful discussion, we need to have the information, and the county has provided a means to get that. It's via the application. That's the venue to get that information. If we get the information here, we're trying to play catch-up in the conversation. So when we're looking to prepare for this hearing, we need the information. Being vague inhibits that meaningfulness that the Supreme Court talked about. That's our concern, the specifics of event center, hours of operation, we appreciate that being clarified, but what they encompass is a concern here. We don't know what the activity center, event center, retreat center, we don't know what that means. We don't know what it encompasses. So we can't have a conversation that no one's talking about. That's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? See any clarification?
Are there going to be weddings?
No, they're currently not in plans.
Currently or not?
There's no plans. Mr. Gibbs has expressed that he prefers not.
Okay.
Is it in writing?
Okay. I assume they're concerned about, on the side the houses are, since you're going to have gardens there, there's going to be a buffer between the residents and what your business center is.
This plaque shows the location of the house, which is right here, and it is surrounded by woods there, the pond here, and this Cherokee County line here, and you've even got the woods over here protecting the other side.
And the residents' houses are...
There's only one.
I mean, there are other people that have been close by there, so...
There's a house here, and there's a house here. This is the other house, and I don't know where there's a house.
There's a house on Flower Lane.
Yep.
Can we see that, please?
I can't read.
I'm sorry.
Further questions from the board?
What I've got concern about is Flower Lane. You can't get an emergency vehicle down there, and if Pickens County's going to have to cover it, somebody's going to have to pick the boat.
The county road.
Is a county maintained road.
It ain't been maintained.
The best county road, then you got to open it all the way to shoemaker lane.
Excuse me. Is part of it is a county maintained road, and as such, it is a fifteen-foot through there right now, and that's why we chose to access the events venue through Cherokee County, so it's not to put any undue pressure on anything in Pickens County, and it is hopefully never to be used, but it's only going to be used for emergency access.
How?
How? How you going to get a fire truck out there if you need a fire truck for those houses?
Five hundred feet in from Yellow Creek.
Hold on.
County maintained road.
Hold on. I'll recognize you. Wes, has the fire marshal looked into any of the questions concerning access to that road?
Yes, to the extent that at current times...
Brian, please. Brian?
Is the fire marshal still here?
Walked out the door.
Okay. At current times, as you know, fire jurisdictions combine services, they look after each other. They can call an engine just as well as we can. There's a house down there on Yellow Creek. One of the reasons I understand that this, that Flowers Lane was considered a part of a county maintained process is because they used that lake to draw water for their pumper tanks. There's some other indications that there's several other ponds along the way. As you can see, and you'll see a sign sometime that says outlet, intake-outlet, things like that, that means that the fire stations can use that when...
So are you saying there's a dry hydrant there?
Yes, I'm not saying there is now, I'm saying that's what I understand the reason for the county maintenance at the time. My biggest point is, is they will go in at the greatest point that they can, and I'm sure even our fire engines would go in through the Cherokee side. These guys coordinate remarkably well, and they know what they're supposed to do. They can chain things, they can do a lot of things, have tanker trucks, hook up tanker trucks. This is all something for the fire experts to explain to you, but my point is, is that they do pool their resources and they do join together.
I know they have a mutual aid group.
Yes, they do. So they were going in the easiest route possible.
Can I add that that's a private drive that there'll be more through?
Can I add the fact that Cherokee County had to stay in my driveway for thirty-five minutes waiting for Pickens County to show up at my house? And I probably got one of the more expensive houses on that part of the county, and I had to wait for Pickens County to show up for thirty-five minutes, and Cherokee County stood by driveway, waiting for the Pickens County sheriff to show up. If my house caught on fire, my house is a smoldering heap of embers. Promise you.
Thank you.
May I respond to the law enforcement mutual aid agreement? That fire and law enforcement is different. May I respond to the mutual aid agreement, please?
I understand a mutual aid agreement.
But we don't.
It's different with law enforcement. So I know the fire, they don't need to do, and we appreciate that, but law enforcement can respond, but the county line, it does defy jurisdiction, and that can't be superseded by MOAs. So when it comes to prosecution in court, it has to be jurisdiction-specific. But again, he's correct. MOA, that's a good thing for us, but law enforcement is different because it has to be by jurisdiction.
Understood. Further questions from the board? Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Evelyn? Evelyn? You are undecided.
Sorry?
You are undecided.
Undecided.
Are you still undecided?
I have some concerns. If I can get those alleviated, then I will not be concerned.
Let me ask you, has what you've heard alleviated any of your concerns?
Okay, I'm still having difficulty hearing.
Has what you've heard tonight alleviated any of your concerns?
Some of it, but not all of it. As I said, get...
Come forward for us, please. That way I can hear you, and you can hear us. And we're going to give Evelyn's undecided, so we give Evelyn two minutes.
I've got, all right. My name is Evelyn McCrary. I live at eighty-six Maze Drive, which is at the end of Old Yellow Creek. My concern is that intersection right at Flowers and Old Yellow Creek, there is a drop-off right at the end of that driveway, just a little to the left. And to the left also is a hill over which you cannot see, and there's a good bit of growth there that kind of periodically gets out in the way. The noise level of the traffic is terrible where we are. I think people from Chattanooga use Old Yellow, use Yellow Creek to get to work in Atlanta. That is the biggest concern, is that that intersection is dangerous. We've had a death on the road just on the other side of that, where it goes downhill and disappears. And another concern is that if you have an event place and people come from all over the world to Gibbs Gardens because it is gorgeous, is there going to be a place for overnight people to stay? And if there is, and they're coming from everywhere, they'll be leaving at all times of the day and the night to get where they're going. And the noise, like I said, is really bad. Basically, that was my concern.
Thank you. And your patience. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I want a motion that the application be approved.
All right, we have a motion, that the application be approved as submitted. Is there a second? No second? Okay, motion fails for lack of a second. Is there another motion? Okay, if there's no motion...
The is not approved. It stays decided. You can't vote it through.
With no motion, the matter stays decided, which I would have to, no regulation to the board. All right, so we have no motion to approve. We don't, we couldn't carry the motion to approve. There's no motion against. The hearing is done. Hearing is closed.
The lady back here could hear again. I didn't hear what you said. I heard the motion was, she didn't disappear from me.
There was no motion, there was no second, so the zoning designation stays decided.
Does that thing still go to the commissioners, or does it not?
It should go. How many times we're going to have to adjourn this stuff from him? Does he even just turn around and redo it? Keep going?
Excuse me. Okay, the record's closed here, but it still goes before the Board of Commissioners for their final vote.
I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to thank the stability. And you know, we're not always going to agree on everything, but we're going to hear each other out.
Respect each other.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?